Should I do that again? Dramatic effect. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Back to you, Councilor. Here. Chair Dumein.
Yeah.
Councilor Leaden.
Here.
Councilor Leaden.
Here.
Councilor Mador.
Here.
Councilor Hallman.
Here.
Councilor Bragg.
If she's calling my name on here, I can't hear her at all.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. Please, everybody stand, remove your caps, and recite with me the principles of allegiance. The flag of allegiance stood in line. Thank you. Mr. Manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Hey. Um. Mr. Chairman, we would like to swap the presentation order and move the Little League donation order to before the manager's report, please.
Got my blessing. So we will go to the approval of the minutes for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, and December eighth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved second.
Motion made by Councilor Mador, seconded by Councilor Gole. I have a roll call vote, please. Councilor Bragg.
Yes.
Councilor Higgins.
Yes.
Councilor Danforth.
Yes.
Councilor Golding.
Aye.
Councilor Pelletier.
Aye.
Councilor Mador.
Aye.
And Chair Dumein is an aye. It's a seven zero vote. Now, we want to move to special presentation by Shelley Lane, the school superintendent for the school financial update presentation.
Yep.
Thanks for letting go.
Most recent profile committee meeting since two thousand and fourteen. So it has been a while. And what we determined at that meeting was even though there wasn't something formal in paperwork that the Sterns staff does a wonderful job supporting students by looking at all kinds of different paths, opportunities, options, and helping students to let us celebrate with them, the walking across that stage to graduation. So we did have that meeting, and now we will have them more regularly. Uh, last week, we also had a district announcement. I hope each of you are receiving those announcements. That's intended to be a personal kind of like promo for our whole school system, Granite and Sterns. We recently hired a international coordinator. We took the position that was currently there and divided it into two. One is an administrator to do all the paperwork, like for the dual enrollment program, and the other will do like the physical activities to get us ready for a summer program and for perhaps some students that we would host in the fall. And late April, there's going to be a meeting at the library inviting people in to find out information about hosting, see if that's something they're interested in, how it works, what happens if all of those scenarios that you might come up against, what happens if someone's hurt, what happens if someone's sick, what happens if they this or that. So we'll hopefully be able to answer a lot of those questions. We did sign on a new school in the dual enrollment program where you don't have all of those details ready for publication yet, but it is, uh, we're, we're pretty much done. So that will be a new dual enrollment program. And if you're not familiar with dual enrollment, that means it's a school overseas that is connected to Stern School. So they use our graduation requirements. They follow our curriculum. And the reason why we haven't quite signed on the deal with these folks is because we have an American history component that we require, and they don't have that. So we're kind of talking about what that will look like. Um, Josh takes care of regular Esser stakeholder meetings. We had another one of those last week. He works very carefully on following the guidelines. Um, the guidelines are getting tighter and tighter as we go down the path because the COVID money is beginning to come more to an end. So some of the old regulations are kind of stepping up in, in play. We received a grant in the food service program for forty-two hundred dollars for carts for the Granite School to make it easier to disseminate the breakfast program there. I don't, probably most of you have been in the gymnasium and you see that it's massive, and there's this dope wall that kind of like comes out from the wall uh, to split the gym in half. Uh, we broke, or we didn't break, but time broke some bearings in that wall. And so Louis had to check everywhere to see if we could replace those, because to replace the whole wall would be incredibly expensive. There's only two left of this type of wall, and one school system had a few parts left over. And then Louis found some, a local fabricator to do something with some bearings. So the wall is back operational, and that was a huge savings on really an old piece of equipment in the school that may down the road add some challenges for us. Our one act play team is going to states tomorrow. So they will be in Ellsworth, and they put on an incredible performance, and the kids are really, really excited. Our um, policy committee has been re-meeting regularly. We have started at eight. We're going all the way through the alphabet for the policies. We're looking to MSMA for a guidance for what we need to change. We've gone through um, A, B, and C. Doesn't sound like we've gotten very far, but there's a lot of policies and there's a lot of conversation. Some of the policies really hadn't been reviewed for a number of years. So while there's not really a whole lot of change, there's a lot of conversation in how applicable they are for today's school. I, before coming here today, I had asked Granite and Sterns, have you got something you want me to tell the counselors? Tell me, I'll tell them. So the next couple of things I have coming directly from teachers at your schools. Um, third and fourth grade have their second student-led conference of the year. Students will use a portfolio to showcase their work to share with parents. The purpose of the student-led conference is to open the eyes of students to their own learning and to help them take responsibility for their progress. That was from Ms. Mooney, Ms. Wheaton, Ms. DeSilva, and Ms. Ally. From Allison de Mello, um, she's the science teacher, and they are looking at cardiac and nerve systems. So they're doing some dissection. So they're dissecting a sheep heart and a sheep brain, and they will be creating the freshman class are going to be creating a, a, I, creating an item and then marketing the item. That's, that's what the freshmen are up to. Uh, Ms. Puffins class, they are really excited about having some of your local, um, people of authority come into the school and walk down the halls, have breakfast with the kids, walk in and out of the classrooms. She's thinking that there are really being some great relationships developed between all the students of the school and some of the folks who are, are coming in. With COVID again, with COVID kind of relaxing a little bit, we're able to have a few more visitors into the school. Now, the gurser is teaching a financial, a personal financial class, and the students are working on job applications, resumes, uh, and they're calculating state federal taxes. Some of them are trying to decide what kind of jobs they want. Um, and then when all of that process is done, they'll be working on interviews to see if they get the job and then working on what their family budget will be based on the job they just got and all of that. So those students are having a great time with that. Laura Dwyer has had the first Sterns Odyssey of the Mind team compete on Saturday. And the seventh and seventh, sixth graders are working tirelessly on this difficult challenge. And the challenge is because I can and they can. So the Odyssey of my, of the mind gives you a problem to solve or gives you a theme, and then you have to be creative on what it looks like, and then it's a judge on, based on certain components. So, so that's what's happening there. And then the GT and STEM group did a simulated shark tank. Um, if you've heard, seen that on TV, so the kids really got, really got into that and kind of competitive, I might say from what I've heard. Um. Let's see. Mrs. Rutherford, Russ, Mrs. R, I can't ever pronounce her name, from Granite Street. I reported that all the children, um, celebrated Maine's birthday on March fifteenth. And to do that, they were asked to bring in something that reminds them of Maine. Whether or not it was an item or a piece of clothing, some came in like, um, like sweatshirts with black bear on them, like for University of Maine, or maybe a plaid shirt, any of those things. And they also have a visitor coming. His name is Mr. Drew, and he's coming to do some animal exploration with the students. Just a couple more. Uh, the karate class is going at Sterns is new this year, and it is, they, the kids are getting ready to test on their second belt. And we've reached out to a couple of other schools just out of curiosity as we were getting ready to do our course list for the students to sign up. And it seems that karate class is not necessarily something serving other school communities. So it's interesting because in ours, it looks like our signup so far will almost double in class. So that's pretty good, and we have seven. So like, that's really exciting. They're all, all doing very well. And I already told you about the grant. And then the last one I want to bring up is that Ms. Peavy is, uh, working on, and, and Mr. Leathers are working on a congressionally directed spending grant through Senator King's office. So they've had a several meetings now. They've developed wish lists from Granite and Sterns. And now they, uh, they have put it all together in an order of a wish list. It involves things like, um, there's curriculum. There's all kinds of things. There's after-school program, some things that our, um, school board has mentioned, after-school program. We've talked curriculum, some social emotional learning and some additional instructional services. So they're working on putting that grant together. Should we be fortunate enough to get to the next round, we'll become more specific with what the cost of some of these things are. And then if we're even more fortunate to receive it, uh, there, really, there's a lot of possibilities. And this grant was suggested to us that we apply for. So we're kind of hoping that that's something good for us. So that's what you're spending your money on, and I'm going to let Josh talk.
So for the past month, uh, I've been focusing mainly on budget preparing for next year. Uh, Dr. Lane and I had meetings with every single department head at least once. We've put together our fourth draft budget. Uh, things are coming together nicely, and, uh, we're we're happy about the, the way that it's progressing. I, uh, hosted a workshop for the school board at the, on the state funding document, ED two seventy. Uh, we were able to analyze the recently released form for FY twenty-four, taking time to see how our state funding is put together based on local and state metrics. I was able to open this up for discussion. That would rate. Really see where clarity is. And I think we were able to provide that clarity thing, further explain how the state numbers. Um, as of right now, we have expended fifty-eight point seven percent of our total budget, and we are seventy-two point forty-eight percent. Questions? Questions on the financials?
Yeah, you, you mentioned you were fifty-eight percent through the budget, and there's, uh, seventy-two percent.
By the way, through the years.
There is due to expectations of being caught up by the end of the budget year.
No, several unfilled.
Unfilled positions that saving.
Yep, as well as other spending.
Thank you. I have a question. Um, can any of that roll over the savings that you anticipate? Does that roll over to the next budgeted season?
Yes, but it will need to go through the audit process first to determine what our fund balance is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from you, Councilor Mador?
Uh, yeah, this chairman, if could. Um. Where are we on, uh, projects in that, uh, that were stated for the school? That, uh, our funds were being used to take care of them, and where are we as far as expenditures and reimbursements coming back to the town or to the school?
Yep. So we're, we're, uh, on track in terms of, um, reimbursements. I've been keeping up with the dates. Um, we were set back a few months because I had to open up the grant to rewrite it.
Right.
And when that happens, I can't invoice for anything. Uh, I've gone through one, uh, revision. I've continued the stakeholders monthly, and I'm planning a second revision here probably in June. Um, as of right now, uh, a lot of our big projects are kind of up in the air. We're looking at the summertime for most of them to go through, um, the parking lot being biggest one. Uh, it's just a matter of coordinating the paving company and setting a date.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, I'm excited to hear about the education component, uh, with the innovation and the entrepreneurial aspect that you, that you mentioned. This is the first time I've heard that. So that's, that's a very refreshing statement, and I'm assuming that Mr. McGibben is the karate instructor.
He is.
Very good, very good instructor. I had him as a child, too. So I'm, I'm excited to hear that that's being introduced into the school system as well. Absolutely.
I think it's really important. I think it's really important that we continue to have an open mind on the offerings that we, um, have. Based on our surroundings, you've probably heard a lot, um, with COVID, it did change the way we look at, at education. It changed the way we look at a lot of things, medical field, shopping, everything. So outdoor ed, um, became a big component, but so did a lot of other things. Outdoor ed seems to have a light shown on it, which is, which is good. Um, but there are a lot of other things, and karate is one of those things. Um, but if we keep a closed mind when we're talking about education, we're never going to grow. And you and I know that sitting right here, the jobs that a lot of our kids, like our kindergarten kids, won't do the jobs we're even looking at today. So if we, we don't continue to progress, and I, I think COVID was a proverbial shot in the arm for us to like reopen up our thoughts about education. So, yes, thank you for acknowledging that. I think that's wonderful.
Any other council comment? Council Bragg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, you know, point out the, the communication. Um, it's been fantastic. Um, uh, Dr. Lane, I, I love the presentation and what the classes are doing. I think that's fantastic to hear. Um, and as Chairman Dumein said, it's, it's a very refreshing, uh, to hear the things that are happening, especially with, with karate class, and he is a fantastic instructor. I agree.
Thank you.
Any other council comment? Council Gole.
I just want to thank you for coming and offering your presentation. Um, it's really refreshing hearing your approach to education. Um, and very nice feeling confident in the leadership of the school. So thank you very much.
Hoping we can all be excited about it, right? It is our future.
Council Mador, once again.
Uh, yeah, I just, one other thing I wanted to ask is, uh, and of course, it comes up time and time again. Uh, where are we moving forward on, uh, advanced placement courses for our students to be able to, uh, move forward?
That's a great question. Um, and at the very last board meeting and following, not in the newspaper, actually, we're looking at the dual enrollment. So, uh, what we're doing is we're, we're looking to see what we have for staff because to be vetted to teach a dual enrollment class, the colleges and universities have standards. So we're, we put it out to all the staff who's interested, who might have the credentials that we could, um, you know, hold in, up in place. And then we are turning those into the university to, um, vet for us. We also know that we have a couple of really dynamic teachers that may not have the master's degree that they would need to be vetted, so they can be vetted underneath a, a co-teacher. So our hope is to have at least four, uh, dual enrollment classes in the fall.
Is there any opportunity, uh, Doctor, to go ahead and, uh, have a, a opportunity for the courses through Eastern Maine community? Uh, through K-Tech to be able to offer our seniors, say juniors and seniors, courses that they could go ahead and get college credits through going through, uh, K-Tech?
Yes, I would think so. And, and dual enrollment, uh, offers the college classes, too. So that's what that is. That means that they would get the high school credit and the college credit, and so they'll actually have a transcript when they leave us. Um, you know, like, I mean, in the end, if we work this out in a, over a couple of years, I would hope that students would leave with like ten credits or twelve credits, you know, if they were interested. And there are a lot of like, I don't know if you've heard of Rural U or E Academy. Like, those classes are also available, and, um, Sue Buzzel and Beth Peavy and I are all having those conversations on offering more. We do offer some. There are some college classes being taken from students now. We're just trying to open up the schedule and the opportunities or the connections directly with the college system.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Councilor Mador. Any other council comment? Council Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, thank you for coming. I, I just couldn't help but smile the whole time you were talking about everything that was going on, you know, in the school and the classrooms, and, um, I'm, I would be, um, honored to be able to come and have, have lunch with the kids in the cafeteria sometime.
Absolutely.
When pre-K is there, you know, I'd have an extra bonus to see my grandchildren there. So I've already signed the, um, the, the waiver, the, to be a volunteer and pass a background check. So please sign me up and just have a time to volunteer, but I just, um, it's such a refreshing report that you provided and to hear how innovative and creative you're being, um, it just, uh, it just excites me, and I want to be part of it, too, going forward. So thank you.
Excellent. So even volunteers, we just talked about those. We have a lot of regular meetings now. So Tuesdays, we have principal meetings to help grow staff, you know? I've had a lot of experience. Some of them are new, so we share wisdom. Um, but we had conversations about volunteers, like, what do they look like? What's the, what's the role? And it was all closed during COVID. So I'm like, so we have an opportunity to start this over again. What do we want it to look like? So we're working on a, a reintegration of volunteers to support kids, but to have fun, like coming in. So you're a child, I mean, so, yeah, we'll add you. Thank you.
So I'm going to move down to the public for comment, but I'm just going to take this opportunity to remind everybody via Zoom that if you want to participate and comment on either a presentation or any of our orders, you do have to turn on your microphone, and you do have to show your video to show it's actually you. So that's going to be one of the things moving forward for the rest of the meeting. In case there's anybody new that hasn't, hasn't shown up here before or would like to comment, that's the stipulation. So with that, I'm going to move down to the public. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the presentation? Seeing none in via Zoom? Seeing none as well. Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Josh. We'll see you next time.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
The next presentation is Betsy Cook from the Trust for Public Lands, a presentation on the community forest. Just a reminder, you have fifteen to twenty minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Um, good evening. My name's Betsy Cook. I am the Maine State Program Director with the Trust for Public Land. We're based out of Portland. Um, and, uh, today I'm going to share, uh, brief information about the Trust for Public Land, but I'm mostly here to, um, discuss the opportunity around community forests. So I'll frame up, um, a little bit of background on how Trust for Public Land can work with communities to acquire and create community forests, and then we'll spend some time, um, speaking about a specific opportunity, um, that's available, uh, could be available for Milunaket. Um, so first of all, uh, Trust for Public Land is a national nonprofit organization. Um, I am solely focused on Maine, and we have an office here in Maine. Um, we've been active in the state for about thirty years, and over the course of those thirty years have completed about eighty-five projects. Um, we are all about creating parks and public open space and protecting land to create healthier, more livable communities for generations to come. Um, and the big caveat is we don't own land. We don't want to own land. We want to help communities meet their goals around land. Um, so we'll work to facilitate, uh, opportunities, um, to bring land into ownership by towns or the state or federal agencies or nonprofits. And we are, um, pretty much solely working at the, uh, direction of the communities that we're, um, working in. So we don't really have a dog in the fight, so to speak. Um, we just want to bring our tools and resources to meet community goals and needs. Um, so one of the ways that we do that is by supporting communities in acquiring land to create community forests, or sometimes known as town forests. And this handout right here, I'll start referring to, um, the community forest model. It's a no-one-size-fits-all model. It's intentionally created to fit the goals and needs of a community. Um, but the core concept is that it's land that's owned by the community for the community. Oftentimes, it's land that is owned by the town itself. Sometimes a nonprofit will own the land on behalf of the community. Um, and one of the ideas is that community members as a whole are really involved in informing how the land is used and managed, and that any benefits from the land come back to the community directly. Um, and then the last piece, community forests, is that we, um, hope to ensure that the land is protected permanently as, uh, forest land, as a community forest. Um, so the first page there breaks that down a bit, just speaking, um, to the kind of four key components, again, community ownership, community participation and management, benefits flowing directly back to the community, and that the land is permanently protected. The back of that first handout, um, speaks a bit to the process of creating community forests. But before I get there, I will touch a little bit on what I mean by benefits flowing back to the community. So these can be all types of benefits. Um, the first one that often comes to mind is economic benefits. A lot of towns will manage their town forests, uh, for timber production and timber income, um, which is definitely a goal of that program, of the program, and many of the towns we work with. There often can also be economic benefits from outdoor recreation and tourism, um, by recreational opportunities on the land that can benefit the towns. There are often social benefits, too. Um, Dr. Lane spoke about outdoor classrooms, and, uh, that is one thing we see with towns owning community forests. Often that land is, is used for outdoor education, especially if it's right near a school, um, or community events. Um, and, uh, there's also community building opportunity just through the process of managing land as a whole community and having, um, having, you know, kind of really large public input and how the land will be used and managed. Recreational benefits are also another, um, piece. So, uh, definitely opportunities to get outside, um, go on a walks, go on hikes after work on the weekends, all types of outdoor recreation, um. Uses have been used on many of the projects we've worked. Uses have been used on many of the projects we've worked on. And then ecological benefits. And the last one that's kind of newer too on many towns that we've worked with is affordable or workforce housing. So oftentimes we are working with towns who are interested in acquiring town forests near the town center. And there's often also a housing need. And so when we're working with acquiring land, we can build that into the transaction and meet any community goals around, around housing. And I can talk to some specific examples there. So the last piece before I get into really what's going on actually in Millinocket is the process. So this back page here speaks through kind of the process of how, when working with Trust for Public Land, how towns can bring land from private ownership into town or community forest ownership. The first step is to identify land that's of interest for the town to own as a town forest. The second piece is what I'm claiming, securing the property. So this is where DPL can offer our skills around negotiating with a private landowner to get a property under a purchase contract and ensure that the landowner is willing to sell the land. Then under that purchase contract, which usually is about one to two years long, we will work to assist the town and local nonprofits in securing the funding to actually acquire the land. We do our best to avoid a situation where the town needs to put any money towards the acquisition of the land itself. So there's a federal funding program called the US Forest Service Community Forest and Open Space Program can fund town acquisition of land. And then there's a state program called the Land Remains Future Program. We usually tie those two together. Community planning, then there's a process to create a management plan for the property. Then that is where we would work together to seek a lot of public input and participation. And then easy piece, just acquire the land for the town. And then the fun piece is to actually have the town own the land and activate it with the goals of the community mind. Let me pause there maybe with any questions on just the general concept.
Sure, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? You may proceed.
Okay, excellent. But second page in your packet there is the map of the land that I have been working with Mike and Peter on a bit to scope out as an opportunity for a potential town or community forest. So it's about four hundred acres total and it's all the parcels in orange. I know you're all probably quite familiar with this piece of property. It is currently owned by Katon Forest Management. And I will put right off the top that we do not have any agreement yet from Katon Forest Management to, for them to sell the land. So that's the big caveat, the big asterisk here. However, we are under a letter of intent and are seeking an appraisal. And if the appraisal comes back at the value that they are interested in and are willing to sell, then, then we could move forward into that purchase agreement. And of course, if the town is interested in proceeding. So we have far from a done deal with the landowners here, but they've definitely been really excellent to work with in just taking it one step at a time to see if there's a value that they could, they could live with. And, and then as far as kind of the opportunity here, you know, the, I think one concept is for the land to be owned by the town. Again, we could work with the town to pursue the funding sources that I mentioned, Community Forest Program and Land Remains Future. And then I think there's some great opportunities for nonprofit partners with Pottery Area Trails or OSI for the nonprofit partners to assist in ongoing stewardship and management of the land. And I can offer lots of examples of other communities that have done similar things. But why don't I just stop there and let you all guide the rest of the conversation with any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Betsy. Council Golding.
Thank you very much for this interesting presentation. When you talk about securing the property and looking for public and private funding, what's a typical model that you see in terms of where you get your funding from?
Yeah, so typically the land acquisition funding, so the amount of money to actually buy the land, we would get from public sources. So fifty percent we could get from the US Forest Service Community Forest and Open Space Program. And then the other fifty percent, I would suggest in this case, seeking from the Land Remains Future Program, which is a state of Maine funding source. The remainder, which is often kind of project costs, so doing real estate due diligence, like a boundary survey or a title commitment or appraisals to support the transaction. Those are all costs that TPL would bear and we would support those costs through private philanthropy. And we would also hold those contracts directly with an appraiser or a surveyor. As far as town costs going forward after the land is acquired, you know, it would mostly be management costs. And so implementing the management that the town wants to do, we have oftentimes fundraised money to set a town or a nonprofit up with a management endowment that they can draw on to cover some of those annual management costs. And then if there are any timber harvesting opportunities and interests on the property, that's then a way that the town could continue to get actually income in to support ongoing costs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And if I can follow up, how broad are the stipulations from those funding sources?
Really good.
On use of property?
Yeah, really good question. And I'm happy to share afterwards examples of the two encumbrances that would come with those funding sources. So the Community Forest and Open Space Program requires a deed restriction in the property deed. And it's fairly general. It basically says, keep the land as forest and manage it as you've said you're going to manage it in your management plan. So outdoor recreation, very much supported and an opportunity motorized and non-motorized, that's all good under that. Working forests, management, all good under that. Public access is required. I would think that would probably be in line with the town's goals. But you can't build anything significant, basically. So you could build, you know, signs, benches, pavilions even would probably be okay. But like a town office wouldn't be allowed. And then with Land Remains Future, it's very similar. They have something called a project agreement, which gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And pretty much everything I just said would be in line with the Land Remains Future.
And last question. You mentioned potentially rolling in other types of developments like housing and things like that. Would that also be something that your organization would assist in funding as well?
Probably not on that one, but we would be very eager to partner with other organizations. And mostly just from a expertise standpoint, we just don't have the expertise around funding housing projects. But we would be an eager partner to get the land, kind of negotiate the acquisition of the land for that piece and support in any way we could.
Thank you.
Councilor Mador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed the focus is primarily the Jerry Pond area and that land that surrounds it. I'm curious, the one spot overall, just off Katon Avenue, is that?
It's the Monkey Trail.
That's the Monkey Trails. And that would, well, I, obviously you don't necessarily refer to it as that way, but that's local. But what we're, what are we looking at as far as, is that, when you said the four hundred acres, is that part of that whole plan?
Yes. Yep. And this, basically everything shown in orange is what KFM has put on the table as something they'd be interested in taking the next step with to get the appraisal. And we are going to get two separate appraisals showing the big chunk around Jerry Pond and the Monkey Trails, the value separately. So there is an option to move forward with one or the other or both, probably, as long as KFM is in agreement.
I certainly think it's something worth going after. I've long thought that the development on the backside of Jerry Pond for recreation would be an excellent piece for Millinocket and be able to take advantage of a totally underutilized asset town has, which is Jerry Pond itself. So certainly, if you can help us pull this off and it doesn't really have to come back to the town as far as anything too oldly expensive, I would be all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mador. Council Pelletier.
Yes, you mentioned that the land you've identified is four hundred acres. I'm wondering, is there a requirement, a minimum requirement per size?
Nope, not at all. Not from our perspective. And from the funding sources perspective that I mentioned, they also don't have a minimum requirement. And this fits really squarely in the spectrum of the projects they've funded. So I think, I think it would be quite competitive, I guess, is what I'm trying to say by that in those funding programs. And I'll expand on that. We've done a thirteen acre community forest and a ten thousand acre community forest. So that shows the, the full spectrum there.
Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Betsy. From a town or municipal standpoint, what do you need from us for next steps? I really like what I've heard and, and I think you've heard some other counselors. So it sounds like you've done some groundwork with Katon Forest Management. Like, what are some of the next steps? Tell us what you need from us.
Yeah, great question. I think for today, the more informal feedback of yes, we're, we're generally interested, can't promise anything, but go forth is all, is all we need at this point. Ultimately, down the road, I imagine, and we'll defer to you all, that acquisition of land would probably go to a town meeting vote. So eventually, when we get there, you know, we would, we would need a vote from the town meeting. Lots and lots of steps to get there. And that is one of the benefits of, of working with a nonprofit is, is we're willing to take on the risk of holding that purchase agreement even before that town vote happens. As long as we have a good sense from the town and the town leadership that this is a project that's of interest.
All right. Any other council comment or questions? I got a couple of questions. You mentioned private donor philanthropy for, and then you mentioned program funding. Is that in your national program, right? So is that like national taxpayer money grant funded or?
Yeah, so the US Forest Service Program, that's taxpayer money. Yep. Coming through the federal US Forest Service, the state of mainland remains future programs, state of Maine funding that typically is funded through bonds. But right now, that pot of money has, is funded through the state budget. And then private philanthropy would be individuals or foundations donating to.
Roughly the percentage breakup of that, whether it's fifty fifty or sixty forty?
Yeah, probably fifty percent federal, fifty percent state, and that would get to the hundred percent land acquisition costs. And then the, you know, covering our staff time, covering our legal time, covering the transaction would be on a, on a project of the scale ten percent of the total project budget.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And don't hold me to those numbers. I can give you a real budget at some point.
Just asking for a ballpark. Seeing no other council comment or question, I'm going to move down to the public. Please announce yourself and.
This one?
It is. So I love it. Three thirty Congress Street. I was just wondering this land, Millinocket don't own?
Correct.
None of it?
Correct.
Okay, so just looking at Jerry Pond pot, is that road private or is Millinocket owning to go to Jerry Pond? The road is an easy manager. Okay. So the Monkey Trail don't belong to us then. Okay, thank you.
Just to answer that question, the Jerry Pond Road is ours and we do maintain it. Monkey Trails does not currently belong to us, but it could at the end of this. And there's already a fair amount of trail infrastructure out there that could be very easily built upon to be the, quite a, quite a better resource for us. And it would, you know, it'd give us more, more intention to, to patrol it and pay closer attention to it as a municipality.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Levin. Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman.
I'll call on you, Mr. Prey afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. John Raymond, two thirty-six Highland Avenue, Millinocket, Maine. I appreciate what you're trying to do here. I think it's a good idea. Anytime you can grab some land and, and control it. It's a, it's a, you know, having a good card in your pocket. But I would also like to see it take one step further and look acquiring a little bit of the land down by Doby. Make that into a forest, community forest there, so guarantee our passage. And it'll take care of the future around here. So just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Mr. Prey, I'll be a zone.
Thank you very much. I can't find the wave my hand button on my laptop at the moment. But I have some interest on the, has this group helped purchase land around other communities that border the unorganized territory?
Yes, we've worked in all kinds of communities that are incorporated and next to unorganized territories. And we've worked in land that's located in unorganized territories themselves. So one recent example I can give is just two years ago, we worked with the town of King Fields to support their acquisition of about two hundred and fifteen acres. That's now town owned as a community forest.
And, and if I may follow up, Mr. Chairman, you had talked about housing. So if this was purchased for public use, that, that we, the town could convert that to a residential area, say for low income or other forms of housing?
Yeah, so I can take that first. Maybe I, I would recommend structure, building into the project structure, the area of the land on the front end that might be of interest for housing. And basically leaving that area out of all of the funding requests to the Community Forest Program and the Land Remains Future Program and only focusing that funding on the land that you want to keep as a, as forest land. That's because once that funding is used to acquire that land, then those property restrictions I spoke about would be in place and you couldn't use that land for housing. So as long as you do it on the front end and just basically leave the areas that are of interest for housing out, then I should be all good.
So if I may, just for clarification purposes, that land would not be purchased with part of the Lands Remains Future or federal forest lands funds that would have to come from another source?
Correct.
And I believe you made the statement that the Lands Remains Future funding is state dollars. It's a, it was a referendum of a recyclable amount of money that, that they put in. It is state money, but technically it was, it's a, was a referendum setting aside a certain amount of money. I, I was a co-sponsor of the original legislation. So just to make sure everybody understands that it's not, it's tax dollars, but it goes out of the bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prey. Any other public comment? Seeing none?
Could I, just one more question?
Our Councilor Mador.
Yeah, you've mentioned being able to, if, if this is purchased by the, and needed to the town of Millinocket, the town would be able to go ahead possibly and do selective harvesting on the land. Would it be able to then be able to be replanted and be able to keep a perpetual forest, you know, planning for? force, you know, planning for people to do this every so many years?
Absolutely.
So that would be, that would be allowed?
Yep.
Thank you.
And looked favorably on by the funding sources, actually.
Thank you, Councilor Dore. Any other council comment? Since we're back to councils, seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. And if anyone does have red flags at this point or good to know, but I'm glad to.
Does the council feel like doing a straw poll to give?
Yes.
All right. Council Bragden.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
We're conducting a straw poll.
Yes, I'm in favor. Yes.
Council Higgins?
Yes.
Council Danforth?
Yes.
Council Dore?
Yes.
Council Pelletier? Council Goldie?
Yes.
Chair DuMay is a yes.
All right.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. I am going to put order number forty nine dash twenty twenty three in front of everything. So we'll get to the manager's report after that, because I know there's a bunch of people on Zoom with lives and they're waiting. So we're going to move to order number forty nine dash twenty twenty three. And I am going to ask Council Danforth to please read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number forty nine dash twenty twenty three, providing for donation to Millinocket Little League. Whereas the Millinocket Little League Board of Directors has requested a donation from the town of Millinocket in the amount of two thousand two hundred and thirty two dollars towards the cost of spot covers for offseason protection of the Little League baseball field. And whereas the town of Millinocket recognizes the volunteerism, hard work and dedication of this program, as well as the grant impact their efforts have on the youth of our tri-town community. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves a donation to the Millinocket Little League in the amount of two thousand three hundred and twenty three dollars. Thirty, excuse me, two thousand two hundred and thirty two dollars from the local American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Goldie. Council discussion?
Chairman.
Council Dore?
While I support the order, I think the the funding mechanism is in the wrong place. I, I don't necessarily agree that this is the good use of ARPA funds for this. What I would like to suggest is that this money be taking, taken from the undesigned fund balance to be able to cover this cost as this has to be, I believe, more of a municipal. I, I look upon this more like I would repairing a municipal asset. And Little League Field, as far as I'm concerned, is our recreation is a municipal asset. So I would look to go ahead and use that money from the undesigned fund balance and keep the ARPA funds for other uses that I think that probably are more appropriate for those funds to be used. But I certainly support the, the idea. I just, the funding mechanism, I think, needs to come out of the undesigned fund balance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
Second.
I had a, I had a question for the manager first. Oh, before we, before we go into that.
Yep.
Do have the funds necessary to cover that under the line that he's referring? Okay. So motion made to change it from the ARPA funds to the
Undesignated Fund Balance, yes.
And seconded by, motion made by Council Dore, seconded by Council Bragden. We'll go leave. All those, Council Bragden?
Aye.
Yes, we need to have a discussion.
Do you have anything to add?
Oh. No, not at this point. I'll, I'll wait until this is done before we do a final vote.
Council Higgins, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I've got to add, Mr. Chair, is I'm a supporter of supporting the Little League.
Good. And Bailey, you're good. You're good. Okay, so down to the public. Any discussion on the amended order? Seeing none via Zoom? Seeing none. Let's go to a vote. Council Bragden, are you in favor?
Aye.
Council Higgins, are you in favor?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council Goldie? Council Dore?
Of the amendment, aye.
Aye.
And as amended, I also am in favor. Back to the original order as amended. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm very happy to see a donation like this. I've spoken to a couple of people that that deal with Little League. And something that I would like to see or hear from the council and see how they feel about it is possibly doing a donation, a yearly donation, whether it be towards, you know, sponsoring a team, doing the scoreboard, a sign. Those are our fields. And I feel like it's an investment on our children, so they get to continue using our fields. So I would like to see a yearly donation that, you know, occurs and goes back into those fields. You know, they made some, the people that did talk to me made some very good points. And I think it's very worthwhile to spend it on our kids. So I would like to see in order, whether it be in the future or here with the council, let's say on doing a permanent donation yearly.
I have a question for you, Council Bragden, along those lines. Would it be considered a donation if we're actually repairing or maintenance of our property?
I think if we let the board decide, whoever does the Little League, whoever we're giving the donation to. If we're letting them decide what they want to do with the money, whether it be buying equipment, repairing fields, upgrading score, scoreboards, you know, the roof on the dugouts, I think we should leave that up to them. I think regardless of what we do do with the money or what we do pour into those fields, should be left up to them regardless. But I, I see it as a donation if we're letting them decide.
Okay, I guess I would, I would think that it would be something more that we would budget, but.
That's what I'm, to the, that's what I'm trying to get to is putting it as a donation line towards them yearly or budgeting for yearly.
Council Goldie, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say the council annually adopts the budget, obviously. So if you wanted to propose a budget line for that, you're welcome to do so. Obviously, it's another organization, kind of like the library, that we budget for every year. Or this could be something that we look at for expanding the donation line in our budget so that we can make expenditures out of that. So it's not specifically a budget line for Millinocket Little League, but we would have enough in that donation line to be able to provide funding on an annual basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Goldie. Any other council discussion? Council Dore?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Council Goldie. I think this has to do with something that has to be done with the budget, but it's again, organizations, whether they be charitable or within the town purview as far as like Little League and Little Giant Football, things like that. They need to come to the town and that money should come out of the donation line as Council Goldie explained in the budget. What we set that on as far as our, our budget going forward, if we take one organization or one group and we add and we add and we add so that we are committed yearly to go ahead and put X amount of dollars in, we're pigeonholing ourselves. And what it does is, I think it's counterproductive to, say, Little League, where they could come to us for projects.
Call for a vote on the order. This discussion is budgeting. It's not sort of.
Now, the discussion is what Council Bragden brought up, which is not the order, but.
We've had a call for a vote, so we will move for a vote. Council Bragden, how do you vote? Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council Goldie?
Aye, although I think we should go to the public first to comment.
Well, every other time we've gone to called for a vote, it's coming.
Usually, usually procedurally wise, the call for the vote, usually there's council discussion, public discussion. If it goes back to the council, the vote can be called at that time. It's usually not called before public input has had a chance to have a say.
All right, then I apologize. I'm going to roll this back and go to the public first, and then we will go to a vote. Okay, Council Pelletier? So going down to the public.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. I have gotten an email myself this week regarding Little League, not necessarily this particular part about making a donation that I did pass on to the town manager and to the council chair because I think the kids need to be supported. There's always discussions on what we can do new to gain the attention of the kids and get them involved. There's nothing wrong with helping out with what we already have. And so I think it should be supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other public comment?
Scott Levin, three thirty Congress Street. I agree with Council Dore that the donation's fine each and each time they need something or really need it. But like he said, if you go with the Little League, what's going to go with the Boy Scouts? And everything else that follows, are we going to save one group of youths better than the other? You know, I think the donation is what they're asking for. We can donate, public can donate. But I think as far as putting it in as a budget, it's, it's not, it's not correct. Because each group is going to ask for something. They say, hey, Little League's got it. Let's ask for two thousand for the year. And like I said, it's just, it's just my opinion, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levin. Anybody via Zoom? Couple of comment? Back to the council. A call for a vote. Council Bragden?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council Goldie?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Council Dore?
Aye.
Council Chair DuMay is an aye, seven zero vote. Passes as amended. All right. Moving on to the enlightening town manager's report.
I, I will do my best to enlighten. I could probably entertain better than enlighten. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the March twenty third town council meeting, we interrupt your regularly programmed manager's report for quarterly year-to-date financial standings of the FY twenty three municipal budget. And I just wanted to offer some gratitude and thanks to the school department for joining us this evening. They really, the relationship there has been very strong and the communication around finance has been durable. And certainly, I think as the, as we together bring these quarterly financial updates and and items to the council, I, I think it just helps better position our, our communication with the town and how transparent we are about finances, how things are going. So I will dive in. I will not be going line by line through this statement, but I, but I will start with saying we are sitting just the way we should be at this point in here. Revenues are coming in strong and spending is, is as it should. Many of our costs are fixed. And we've even had some, some positive, positive happens, a positive happenstances to, to, to make things look a little better than planned to be. So starting with the revenues, we've had an unexpected bump in the, just in the interest coming from the cash on hand. We had expected a little over seven thousand and we're actually pushing fifty thousand gained interest from that account over this year. So that, that's a good sign. Municipal revenue state domain revenue sharing municipalities, we were slated for one point five million dollars. We fused one point three into our budget. We're already received a little over one point two million on that. And we are tracking to, you know, maybe even outdo the original number from the state. So that's looking very healthy. If we go down a little ways, item of note, Town Clerk's Department. That is pacing as it should and third quarter as it, as we are in the third quarter. With one quarter left, I think that we're very well there with the amount that's needed to make what was listed in the budget. You look a little further down that page, planning code development, you'll see that we had pretty low expectations moving into that year. And though these are small dollar amounts in the big picture, we had originally expected a little over two thousand dollars to come in from these permitting lines and, and we're actually just shy of four thousand at this point. So I think that code permitting the continued outreach and the education around why we're doing that and, and, and how it works is actually helping increase that revenue. And I'm, I'm anxious to see how the new online, more convenient addition to the process will, will affect numbers moving into the next budget. Everything remaining on that page is, is really just as it should. Won't waste much time there. Looking at the last page on the revenue fund. You know, we, we see that the reimbursements from the general assistance program is coming in, tracking well. We have some spending to do with budgeted for the Stonebeale TV grant, that sixteen and the uncollected is sixty eight and the uncollected is still at sixty eight. But, you know, that's a timing thing. You'll notice that in the debt fuel sales line, a little further down the road, under airport business, that's really blowing itself out of the water. We had expected around thirty two thousand. And already at this point in the year, we're at a little over forty four thousand. So those, those numbers are coming in very, very nicely. We're very, very happy with how that program is running up there at the airport. I'm going to move over to the expense side of things. Much of this report is based off fixed costs associated with salaries and, and benefits, so I, I won't spend much time on those. On this first page, you'll notice a couple of minor discrepancies. And, you know, they, those are related to postage and, and billing of, of things in the necessary equipment. I'll pause to this person. Assessing is holding strong and looking well, as it should. Under the municipal building section, halfway down that page, we're on our way out of the heating season and the fuel line still looks very healthy. With, you know, we had budgeted to spend twenty thousand dollars there. We're only at about thirteen at this point. So depending on what we need to, to get through the remainder of the heating season, you know, I think we're looking very good there. I'm actually anxious to see how the new heat you know, I think we're looking very good there, I'm actually anxious to see, um, how the new heat pumps in the building, uh, that'll be installed soon, uh, will affect that line and that spending moving forward.
Mr. Manager?
Sure.
I'm briefly interrupt you, Madam Clerk. What's the policy on, uh, Jim's phone? Should it read Jim's, him last name?
It absolutely should.
Yes. Unless his last name is phone.
Oh, they've disappeared.
And they're gone. Sorry for that interruption.
Let's see, we're moving down, um, so this, this, uh, the next section in there be legal expenses, um, this, there are some, some pretty glaring differences if you look at the last column, but if you look at the bottom of that section, the spending within that column is is, um, far within the range, um, but the, those negatives or overages that show in that other line, uh, those were added later to 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 identify special lines for special projects, um, both of which have been finalized and will no longer issue moving forward, so that'll, that'll cut, um, a large section of what the town had been spending on legal fees, um, into the future. So overall, we're doing very well, we've only spent, uh, roughly half of the legal line, and we really have no, um, expectations to to spend much for the remainder of this year, um, and it'll actually be an opportunity to limit that line and your, you know, I think that confidence in decision-making in my office, um, has grown, that powering myself and the staff to make the decisions we need locally, saving us funding, we're also, uh, beginning to lean more into the service provided through our membership of the main municipal association, that is always a service that has been available, you know, for for minor things, but cheaper to pay free than it is however many hundreds of dollars it is in. So good news there. Uh, moving over into the rest of that administration line, we're again looking at many fixed rates, um, everything pacing as it should. Um, if we move down to the economic development line, uh, I'd point out there that we're seeing, um, of course, you see the CAT TV funding from B-line coming in there, um, and you also see, um, some other income from other, um, not, these are the, this is the spending side of that, I'm sorry, I had a note on the revenues to, uh, go over those loans as well, but, um, yes, in the economic development line, you see the CAT TV spending, not the CAT TV revenue, um, and then you know, you also see the communications line, which, um, uh, you know, that was increased, and I can certainly tell you that, um, you know, that account, I think, is being used more strategically and probably stronger way than it ever has been. You know, working with our communications and and web presence and outreach, um, you know, we're, we're making very good use of that funding. Um, we see on the next page a pretty large chunk, um, in the, so we have, we have the ARPA spending listed out in this next section, um, so out of the, I think we were in the range of four hundred and forty thousand, um, we have spent roughly a hundred and ninety-two thousand of that pot of funds, um, binder to the council, we have to identify spending on the remainder of that for the end of this year. So you could, um, share some ideas on what you see as appropriate spending, that would be very helpful. Uh, continuing through um, with the fire and ambulance, um, this is where you'll see a lot of the payroll and benefits, um, for the cost of running the department. And you'll see um, you'll also, so if you look at the overtime line here, um, you know, originally budgeting thirty-five thousand and and ending up just about twelve thousand at this point, heading into the final quarter of the year, um, you can see what the additional positions, the regular positions that were granted to that position for, um, time and coverage, you'll see how that's actually saving overtime category. Uh, so making very good use. Um, so on this next page, uh, I'm sure many picked up on the, um, alarming amounts under fringe benefits. That was, uh, not expected, lots of, um, negative and red numbers that you'll see there, you have the colored version. So that actually is the, um, that comes from the process of mustering out retirees uh, that that, you know, they bank in so many patient hours and and parts of their, uh, main retirement, uh, program, so we did have a pretty large hit, uh, on that with with the three very long-time public works, uh, department, uh, employees that retired this past fall. Uh, so, you know, you will see, um, several more of these over the next couple, a lot of longtime employees that will be mustering out. So that's, that it is alarming, but it is, uh, you know, it's a necessary expense. Um, going into the public works area of the budget, you'll also see here a big savings on overtime, um, you know, this, this winter was, uh, wasn't as nice to the, the local businesses who cater to the snowmobile traffic as it was to our overtime line. Uh, without, with the lack of snow that we saw this year, there was a lot less plowing happening, um, so there was a lot less overtime used from that department throughout the winter season. Um, couple of slight overtures there, we did have, uh, overages, I mean, um, we did have to change the drug testing and physicals, uh, vendor several times um, due to either no interest from the company in renewing the doing the equipment or no longer providing the service, so that, that price had fluctuated um, as well as down here in the tree, tree care line, it's, that's significantly overspent at the moment. Um, we had some unexpected tree, um, fallings, you know, through, through rough weather, um, over the last year, they had to be taken care of, uh, by our public works crew, uh, trees that would have fallen from the municipal land onto, kind of land ownership, um, we had to contract it, get some of that out of there. Or or dead trees that were, um, about to fall on somebody's property, had to have a professional come in and take those down. Um, the rest of these sections here coming up are all very well fixed rates, um, that really don't fluctuate very much throughout the year. So I'm going to move ahead a little ways. Um, I'll identify in the airport business, um, you'll see a pretty large overage there under the cost of jet fuel sold. Um, it's, it's not as alarming as it seems as an expenditure because that's actually an item that we purchase, um, that we sell for profit, so it's really an inventoried item, um, and we'll continue to sell that throughout the year. Whatever's left continues in the inventory and tends to be sold, uh, for profit. Um, final good news out of this last page, uh, if you look under special capital improvements, airport grants, um, forty-two thousand dollars, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but is, that is the grant that, uh, we received to offset, um, your sp- a large chunk of your salary. Okay. I I knew that it was a portion of it, I didn't know if it was the full forty-two, but yeah, so we actually received that grant to, um, help offset the salary of the airport manager. Um, you know, as you can see throughout here, everything looks, uh, for the most part, exactly as it should, um, and we are both saving a little and receiving a little more revenue than expected, so, um, I feel very happy with where we're sitting going into the final quarter of the year and bearing next year's budget. That'll conclude my financial update. Back to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, any council comment or questions, Council Goldie?
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager, and, uh, all the department heads that are clearly doing a great job. Um, I just want to applaud you on three specific lines on here that can be directly attributed to your successful management style. Between three lines, legal services, communications contract, and overtime due to creating a good work environment, great hiring, uh, choices, and clearly being comfortable in the position as you stated, you've saved the town so far, one hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars because of your management skills and your success in this role. So I just want to point that out and thank you for your good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Goldie, any other council comment on the manager's report? Hey, I have one question. And it is concerning the police department's contract. Can you, just because I do not know and I haven't seen from the original contract, what year was the first year that we contracted East Millinocket Services?
I would defer that to a member of the council who was present at the time, I want to say it was twenty twenty.
Uh, referring to the police department service contract, can you tell me what year and what the original contract was worth?
It was originally, I believe, a one-year contract that we extended for three years, and we should be in year two or three, I think two, of that extension.
Has it increased?
It has, um, because they were looking to hire more officers, and there could be smaller things like with any budget of fuel and other increases as well, but it did go up primarily because they wanted to hire more officers. And I should say, we also wanted more officers.
Do we anticipate that going higher than this budget?
That's up to a conversation. Danny Communication, alluding to that, no, I would expect it to stay flat.
Thank you. With that, moving down to the public. Any questions or comments on the manager's report? Via Zoom, seeing none on both, we will move past the manager's report. Moving to order number forty-five dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Order number forty-five dash twenty twenty-three, providing for execution of the town warrant for March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered that the town warrant for March twenty-three, twenty twenty-three in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand and sixty-four cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Madora, council discussion.
Speak about, speak on some heavy hitters that we have here, um, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents, Arcadia Design Works, that's airport terminal, um, engineering and design, um, the four thousand, six dollars and six cents, Richard Harmon did so, worked on the airport chimney, um, three thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents, uh, municipal review committee, those are disposal fees, three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and eight cents, uh, New England, New England Salt LLC. Um, five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, Preble Oil Company. Hundred and seventy-five thousand and forty-nine dollars, Town of East Millinocket, and that's police, uh, contract. Uh, eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars, Versant Power. Three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents, um, Witten's Two-Way Service, uh, that's for the fire department, and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, payment to Millinocket Memorial Library.
Thank you, any other council comment?
Chairman?
Council Madora?
Yeah, I just want to go ahead and, uh, thank Council Danforth for her diligence today on, uh, undoing the warrants. Uh, there was a couple of things that were, had, I had not found on them that I was looking for. Council Danforth had found them, she did very well, and, uh, diligence makes a big difference when you're doing this and doing it right, because this is taxpayer money, so congratulations, Council Danforth.
I'm sure, no doubt, due to your tutelage.
I had a good trainer, yes.
There's a tongue-in-cheek moment there, because you can share some of that later, but, uh, thank you. Uh, any other council comment? Seeing none, down to the public. Via Zoom. Roll call vote, please, Council Braggan?
Council Braggan sent me a text message, he had to step out for.
Yeah. Excuse Council Braggan. So move to Council Higgins, yes. Okay, so we'll move from roll call, general voting, okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, six zero. Thank you for that. And order number forty-six dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, please read.
Order number forty-six dash twenty twenty-three, providing for execution of wastewater warrant for March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for March twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Madora, council comment?
I'll just, a couple of heavy hitters, just, uh, two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and eighteen cents to the Town of Millinocket, seven thousand, three, seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, uh, Versant Power.
Do you have any other council discussions? Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, also seeing none, all those in favor? See, one, two, three, five, six, six zero. Order number forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, Council Goldie, please read.
Order number forty-seven, twenty twenty-three, providing for approval of an application for an entertainment license for Highlands Tavern. It is ordered that the attached application for an entertainment license is hereby approved for Christopher Carr, Kattaden Services LLC, Millinocket, doing business as Highlands Tavern, nine seventy-three Central Street, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Goldie, seconded by Counselor, once again, Madora. Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, it is six zero unanimous. Order number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Certainly. Order number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three, providing for approval of an application for a mountain fitness and spiritualist liquor license for Highland Tavern. Is ordered that the attached application for a malt, venus, vineyard, and spiritualist liquor license is hereby approved for that services LLC, nine seventy-three, Central Street, Millinocket, doing business as Highland Tavern's nine seventy-three Central Street, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Madora, council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, seeing none, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, six zero, unanimous. And moving to order number fifty. Order number fifty dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chair, order number fifty, twenty twenty-three, provide the acceptance of Hanos- Penobscot County ARPA grant funding Town of Millinocket, whereas the Town of Millinocket Community Initiatives Director applied for and is awarded forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Penobscot County Commissioners, American Rescue Plan Act funds towards a modernization, modernization of From Penobscot County Commissioners, American Rescue Plan Act funds towards a modernization, modernization of the municipal building elevator. And it is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council accepts these funds with gratitude and appreciation. It is further ordered that these funds be marked for the use by the town treasurer towards the municipal building elev- elevator modernization. Note, these funds will be paired with financial contribution from the court and the local funds to round off the total cost of this project.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Medor. Council discussion. Council Medor.
Yeah, I just want to go ahead and uh thank uh Amber Wheaton, our uh CID person for the grant work that she did on this. Uh, it's gonna be a, uh, a good shot in the arm for the municipality to be able to get that elevator. Hopefully, if back up and running in good shape and be safe for so many uses that we have here for the disability, but especially I think she's, she did a great job. And this is one of the things that we hired a uh a CID person for, and so far, like I say, I, I think she's paid dividends for the points. So thank you, Amber, and uh I look forward to these funds on the elevator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other council comment?
Once I can figure out how to use the microphone. Now, I too, um, want to thank Amber for her work uh behind the scenes for applying the grant to county commissioners, and I know um we have a great resource now, um, not that we didn't before with Laura Sanborn with our county commissioner, David Marshall, helping us out here. And um, we know that we, we have another resource and, and as far as Penobscot County um funding, and I'm glad that that we took a that we stepped out and, and, and she applied for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Any other council comment? I would like to personally thank uh Amber as well, uh, and thank the manager in his office for making this happen in a timely fashion. I have been in contact with the commissioner. Uh, Marshall as well, uh, for some conversations about this. I'd like to uh show my appreciation for him as well and uh making Millinocket a priority. And um, I'm glad he has funds. With that being said.
Oh, there you go.
There we are. Couple of handsome fellows.
Looks like, looks like a future commissioner. All right, down to the public. Any comments on order number four? Seeing none via Zoom. Seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Order number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, Council Medor, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, providing for acceptance of movie projection equipment donation from the Kataden Chamber of Commerce. Whereas the Town of Millinocket Events Committee has approached the Kataden Chamber of Commerce regarding use of their movie projection equipment with the goal of continuing regular community movie nights. And whereas the Kataden Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors unanimously voted to donate the equipment to the Town of Millinocket, recognizing the community and regional benefit. It is ordered that Town, Millinocket Town Council accept the donation of this equipment from the Kataden Chamber of Commerce on behalf of the Millinocket Events Committee.
Second.
Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none, back to the manager.
I'd just like to mention that um this is the same system we have been using for community movie nights, um, but it is now under our um ownership and we're very grateful for that. It will still be um an option for other communities as, as um intended by the uh, the Chamber of Commerce. If, if there were other communities nearby that, that wanted to request use of it, um, we would be open to um, allowing them to do that. Um, and the next community movie night is Friday tomorrow uh, over at the Sterns High School gym, uh, it'll be showing Strange World. It's a fantastic film. Um, and then there are several others coming up in the near future. Um, I don't know the dates off the top of my head, but uh, check our social media and and um other sources of communication.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, let's go to a moment. Oh, actually, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. It is unanimous. Right. Reports of Communications, War Committee for April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, council meeting will be chaired by May and Counselor Gold lead. Well, now, he and you. Check committee reports. Council Pelletier.
Child review committee, I'd like to make an apology for the uh problem link at our meeting, last meeting. And hopefully strained down by our next meeting, which is uh Wednesday, April fifth at four thirty in the manager's office.
Thank you, Council Pelletier.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the age-friendly committee met on Tuesday uh via Zoom and some of us were at the library as well. A couple of things that came out of that meeting, um, I wanted for people to make note of is that Saturday, April twenty-second is Earth Day. And um, the age-friendly committee in partnership with some of the other organizations involved in the committee are gonna uh work on a community event um around sprucing up downtown. So Michelle McGuinness, community coordinator for Akatad volunteered to take the role on this, the lead role on that. So watch out for more information and mark your calendars and um, for Earth Day, Saturday, April twenty-second to join us, but more information to come. Um, the second thing that I wanted to mention, um, that is also in the works, um, and is going to happen in June, um Barbara Riddle Dvorak, uh, she's a lifelong Maine AmeriCorps member, has been working with the Age Friendly Committee, but she's um she's also spearheaded in the lead for a Millinocket Farmers and Artisan Market. Um, that's gonna happen. It's gonna become a reality. So the start date is slated for June third to go all the way through September sixteenth, and it would be held in Veterans Park, um, nine to twelve. So more details will be coming and next week we will finalize a flyer and vendor applications um for that. So uh, a couple of exciting things coming out of the Age Friendly Committee. And our next meeting will be April eighteenth at three P M. And as it gets closer to that date, I'll make sure to remind everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Council Gold lead.
Thank you. The uh Economic Development and Sustainability Committee is scheduled to meet Tuesday, five P M. We are looking to finalize a recommendation to the council for um the short-term rental um ordinances and a proposed change to the uh tax-acquired property bidding process as well. Um, so it'll be held here in these chambers Tuesday, five P M. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Gold lead. And I'd like to, like to extend my thanks to all the council members that have been conducting your um committee meetings very, very well. Thank you. I've attended a few of them and uh they all seem to be fairly active. So thank you for that. I do have one chair committee report. I'm not a chair, but I'm part of the committee. And the other committee members that chair are not here, but I received a email request um, from uh Chief Tom Malcolm and Assistant Chief John Cody. Uh, he would like to be a voting member of the, of the events committee. So I'm gonna be putting him in place to uh be on the events. Just wanted that to be noted. At this moment, we're gonna be entering a two-minute public comment, um, where you can engage the council. It's um their choice whether they engage you back. So keep your comments under two minutes and um now's your time. Via Zoom. Seeing none, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Motion made by Council Gold lead, seconded by Council Medor. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Meeting is adjourned.